Good evening and welcome to the March 17th, 2014 regular meeting of the Edina School Board. We do have a quorum this evening. First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes. We had a special meeting on February 24th and a regular meeting on February 24th. Can I get a motion to approve?
So moved?
It's been moved and seconded to approve the minutes. Any items for correction or addition or deletion from the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving the minutes as written, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any requests for members of the audience to speak this evening? Thank you, Sarah. We have Countryside Elementary patiently waiting tonight.
Karen Bergman, Principal from Countryside and a team of staff and young learners are here to tell us a little bit about the good news happening at Countryside. We welcome them.
Thank you very much. Superintendent Dresson, Board Chair Meyer, and the rest of the Board, we're so pleased to be here tonight. I have one job and one job only, and that is to introduce these wonderful students and their teachers and let them show you what it is that they're here to talk about tonight. Basically, what we would like to show you are some of the great things that we've been doing with the resources that have come our way in the last couple of years, namely, our iPads in some of our primary classrooms and then also the Chromebooks. Our kids are doing awesome things and they are here to tell you all about it. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to our classroom teachers. And before I do that, I also want to recognize Mr. Banks, our technology para without whom we would not be here and able to show you so many great things. So our continuous progress classrooms that are here represented tonight are first and second grade, Mr. Lindsay and Ms. Carlson. So we'll turn it over to them.
We have a couple of students that are going to share some projects with us.
Thank you so much for having us here tonight. It truly is an honor to share with you some of the things that are happening in our classroom and get a window into our world of what's happening in first and second grade. And first to share with you is Carter Lund. He is a second grader and he's going to talk about an app called Storehouse.
Hi, my name is Carter and I'm in second grade. I worked with the app Storehouse to present my informational writing. First, I went on the iPad and searched for information on my Minnesota animal, the lynx. I wrote my notes down in five categories: look-alike, food, habitat, fun facts, and predators. Then I went on the iPad to search for pictures to match my notes. After that, I imported the pictures to Storehouse, typed up all of my information, made a quick video, and published my information to the web. I really enjoyed how easy it was to use Storehouse for my presentation.
Thank you, Carter.
Here's just a little look at his project. He did the lynx.
Hi, my name is Carter. And here's some information on the lynx, a common Minnesota animal.
And you'll see, he just took his notes, put them in his own words, found some great pictures to accompany them, and placed them up. Yeah, that was a particular favorite. He asked for permission. It was granted. And you know, the great thing about this was he just went and he found these pictures on his own. And I said, "Make sure that you find pictures that match what you're talking about," and he did a great job. And like he said, it was really easy to use. So, thank you, Carter.
And next up to talk about another really intuitive device that we use in primary is iMovie. And Brayden Covanda from my classroom, also a second grader, will be sharing some more with you.
Hi, my name is Brayden and I'm in second grade, too. I worked with the app iMovie to present writing digitally. First, I worked with my team of four to create a story that had to do with superheroes. We planned what we wanted to happen in the video and what props we should bring. After the script was done, we got to take videos inside and outside that would match what we wrote. When the videos were done, we edited them together with our teacher. Finally, we published them to YouTube. I really enjoyed the filming ability about using this app.
Thank you, Brayden. Let's take a look.
This is one of my favorite projects every year. It should make you laugh.
Thank you so much for allowing us to share what it is that we've been doing in our classroom. It's something that we really enjoy. Next, I'd like to pass it to Jen Gross, third grade.
Good evening. I'm Jennifer Gross. I teach third grade at Countryside. And I'm going to pass it over to the experts right away.
Hi, my name is Blaze Avery and I am a third grader at Countryside. I'm going to show you how I created a blog to show my technology projects. This is especially fun for me as I just moved from New Zealand and I'm able to share my work with my family and friends. First, we created a blog. Then, every time we finish a project, we embedded it onto our blogs. This allows us to share our work with our parents, friends, and relatives. The coolest part is you can see who is viewing your blog all over the world by looking at this map. This is an example of my favorite project this year. My Family Story by Blaze Avery. I dedicate this family story to my great-grandma because she died and I am very sad about that. This is a story about my great-grandma in an earthquake. It takes place in Hastings, New Zealand. It all started long ago when my great-grandma was at school one morning. At 10:47 on the 3rd of February 1931, a 7.8 magnitude earthquake struck the region. An earthquake that strong does a lot of damage. My grandma and all her friends were very scared. Luckily, their school building was not damaged and no one was hurt. If that was me, I would be super scared. My grandma.
And one more thing I wanted to say about the blogs. You can see up there that Blaze has hits, being that she just moved here from New Zealand. She has 11 hits from New Zealand, 12 from Australia. She thinks they're all from her godmother, right? And then, one from Poland, the Ukraine, Germany. So it's kind of fun for the kids to really see people, you know, all over the world just clicking on their blog, checking out their work.
Hi, my name is Amin Hussain and I'm a third grader at Countryside. I'm going to show you a really cool app called Erasmus. We are using it to create a scavenger hunt for Mrs. Gross next year's class. First, we wrote about an important place in the classroom and videotaped it. Then, we took a picture of the place in the classroom. The app links the picture to the video as you scan your iPad over the item. Watch.
A really important object in room 101 is a silver basket labeled Mrs. Gross's mail. It is important because returning our homework, field trip slips, letters to the teachers, from our parents, and any other important form. We need the basket because then we know where to put our important things. You shouldn't just hand it to the teacher, she might lose it. It is good to be organized. This helps me because it helps me get my homework to my teacher and it makes it easier for everyone.
All right. Thank you very much. I'll pass it on to the fifth grade team.
Hi, I'm Paige.
I'm Reagan.
And I'm Monica.
We are here to represent the Countryside Elementary School fifth graders. We are here today to talk to you about the Chromebooks.
We use Chromebooks in multiple ways. We use Chromebooks almost every day in our classrooms.
Some ways we use Chromebooks in our classrooms are to write MeBooks, create presentations, and to do research.
Another example of how we use Chromebooks is to make PowerPoint presentations and Pressees.
We also used Chromebooks for our recent project to find research for diseases that we chose.
We can get to Moodle from our Chromebooks. We can also make Kahoots and Dipities.
Kahoots are online quizzes, Dipities are online timelines. Be ready, you will take your Kahoot a little later.
We also play educational games on our Chromebooks.
Chromebooks are very helpful for our classwork and activities.
Some good qualities that Chromebooks include are that it's lightweight, it turns on quickly, it is not too large, and it is easy to carry.
The Chromebooks load faster than the desktop computers that we have been using in past years.
One drawback with the Chromebooks is that we have to share with the other fifth graders in different classrooms.
One way to make school Chromebooks even better would be if each student had access to one at all times.
They could work on late work, assignments, and teachers wouldn't have to create schedules for using the Chromebooks.
Thank you for listening to us. Now, fellow fifth graders, Olivia, Olivia, and Emily, and Alec, will demonstrate one of our activities on the Chromebooks.
A Kahoot is an online game or quiz that you play with friends or family or classmates on a project that you have just recently done or stuff like that. And how you play is that you have to sign on to Kahoot dot it, which we've already done for you, and I will give you the game pin when I'm done speaking. And once you sign in, you can give yourself a funny name. And then, wait till everyone has signed in. After that, what will happen is there will be a square, a circle, a triangle, and a hexagon. And on the master screens are all over here, you will have a choice to pick those. And there's different answers for each question. You're going to choose the best answer that you think there is. And your objective is to get the most points and things like that. So, here's a Kahoot.
So type the word connecting?
Yes.
Got to be the one.
Don't, don't.
404, right there, hurry.
Ah, got it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Yeah, that's me. It's up there. Yes.
Who are you, Sparky?
No, I'm Sparky.
I'm Funny Log.
Is everyone logged on?
Everybody's in.
You have 10 seconds to answer the question.
Oh, wait a minute.
We don't have as much time as I want.
The question's up there!
Yes!
Okay, try again.
Okay. Can we start over? I typed it, Randy.
I get it now.
Why do we use Chromebooks instead of paper and pencil?
And the correct answer was, they're very handy.
What is the best thing we have done on a Chromebook? Use Moodle to type MeBooks?
Hey, I'm winning.
How will we use Chromebooks to manage files in the future?
It will help us with our homework.
Oh, all the above!
How careful are we with our Chromebook? Correct answer was none of the above.
What do we use voces for? Correct answer was schoolwork. Or presentations. What can't we do on a Chromebook? All of the above.
I didn't look carefully.
No clue.
In what class did we use Chromebooks to write our pen pals? Correct answer was reading slash LA. How much do we appreciate using Chromebooks when editing MeBooks?
The correct answer was lots. Okay, we're finally getting it. We use Chromebooks for... Correct answer was all of the above. After this, this one will be the last question. Our least favorite things we do on Chromebooks are... Correct answer was, we love everything about Chromebooks.
Look, I'm on the screen! I'm finally on the screen!
The winner is Team Green!
We learned about Kahoots at a staff meeting a number of months ago. One of our kindergarten teachers actually brought it forward and had us practice as staff. And now, the kindergartners are using it as well as all of our other students. So it's kind of a cool tool. Congratulations, Countryside students, well done. We're pleased that you showed things to our school board tonight and to our community. Thanks for having us, we appreciate it.
Thank you.
Steve, did you set that up? You couldn't have written that.
Next up, we're on to reports. Part of our strategic plan back in 2012 was to really take a look where we wanted to be as far as the school district and next generation as far as the school district. And our start was to take a look at our secondary program, grades six through 12. Last spring, the board approved a series of recommendations that required an implementation effort on a phased-in process of how we might do that. I'm going to give a quick overview of the work that's been done with this implementation team made up of six teachers and three administrators and several district office administrators over the past year. They've been meeting on a regular basis. I've got with me today Paul Kyle, who's an instrumental band teacher at the high school, Mark Carlson is a math teacher at Valley View, two of the members of the committee of six teachers that are meeting on a regular basis. I'll let them give kind of the details, but I'll give the quick flyover. I do facilitate this team that meets on a regular basis and do a lot of our work electronically as well as in person. Again, it's built on the theme that learning is our constant and where we need to get more creative is how we can use our resources of time, talent, funds, and space, and those become our variables. So in our problem solving, that has been our focus. We are built around this belief system of a personalized learning system within the schools. And among those beliefs is that students need to own their learning, that we need to take a look at how we can do this in a flexible fashion, that we recognize the role of teacher is going to continue to evolve. It's still a very enneque role in learning, but how do we use that 21st century? The importance of relationships and connections, the importance of families being connected with the schools, the teacher, the parent, and the student forming that bonding triangle, and that we need to adjust the learning opportunities as success occurs or as struggles may continue. We are based, again, on educational competencies. This was shared at a previous board meeting. But this whole thought of it's no longer about a degree and taking so many courses of this or so many courses of that to get your diploma, but really starting to look at mastering levels of competencies. We believe these are key competencies that need to be part of every child's life going forward and that will drive our curriculum to have it focus on that. Again, we're reminded that we're still about Edina excellence and we've identified that through the implementation process, what we really value and what we really think is this is going to be part of our brand going forward, this is not going to shift. It's what do we need to do to keep advancing our excellence? What's our commitment to continued improvement? Among those excellence areas, we can identify things like personal relationships, we can identify things like high expectations in the academics, the arts, the extracurricular. This whole thought of what we're really doing is preparing children and our youth right from that get-go so they can be successful in their college careers and life experiences. We built it off, again, this thought of the global competencies, that we're going to identify key standards that align through a course audit process. And then, we make sure if we have courses that aren't being provided, that we develop new coursework. Again, this is all to be phased in over a variety of years. It's the work the implementation team has been working for, recognizing it's more than just a report card that gives a letter grade, but really taking a look at the full child experience from the academics, the wellness, the lifestyles, the interest inventories, the personalities around strengths and challenges, and then actually setting goals. And that we'll have a measured way of doing this in a very electronic fashion. You can see, this is, again, something we're not rolling out next fall, but this is on our march to make this happen. We've been in this continuous improvement process and we're moving through the first two phases into this idea phase and experimentation phase with the implementation team. So they've been doing a lot of research, they've been building prototypes of seeing what could work, they're bringing things to scale so that as we get into that evolution stage next year and the years following, we've done our homework to make sure we have a successful experience for our learners as they prepare for their world that lays ahead of them. We identified five major areas of study that the implementation teams are working off based on the recommendations from that approved product from last spring. These recommendations focus on a variety of different areas. I'm going to let Paul and Mark talk a little bit about some of the work that's occurred in these areas and then kind of move us through and then we'll open it up for some board discussion.
In these recommendations, we've looked at a variety of different things from a yearly schedule to daily schedule to opportunities for personalization, opportunities for delivering curriculum in a different way, tying in some of the E squared learning, and looking more specifically at certain elements like the world language element and looking at space and how that might impact learning. Some of this has been site visits, some of it has been articles, sharing together different information, but trying to pull together as many ideas and recommendations as possible to roll out an effective plan for ourselves.
We're really looking at different ways that we can help personalize learning for kids. We're really looking at the expanding of advising and kind of expanding that maybe to the high school level and maybe making it a little better experience at the middle school level as well. And really kind of the alignment from middle school through high school so that transition as a kid moves from sixth grade all the way through 12th grade is as smooth and a nice transition for them.
Whoops, it's the wrong way. We've looked at digging deeper into the power standards and taking a look at how that affects our course and allowing us to do a course audit to see where those alignments happen. We've looked at grade configuration and, again, the idea of having a coherent 6 through 12 model, something a little bit more cohesive that helps the transitions as we move forward. Looking at course offerings that accommodate not only personalization but the developmental needs, but still offers opportunity for student-to-staff collaboration as well as staff-to-staff collaboration. And then also taking a look at what our outro might be, what the exit strategy is, post-secondary course options, as well as looking at facilities plans that can help further some of that learning.
I think one other thing with collaboration is the student-to-student collaboration as well, building that time in.
So, right now, we've shared much of this with our colleagues through a variety of formats and still seeking feedback from them. They're still chiming in. And we're test-driving a few ideas. Our next step will be to do a pilot process and ask for the shared expertise of our colleagues to see what next-generation pilots might look like. The timeline is, right now, we're in the initial discussions and kind of ferreting out some of those ideas and see what they might offer as ideas for possible pilots for next year.
These are the different areas that we're looking at for pilots, integrated content, flexible staffing models, is there ways that we can do things a little bit differently to help meet the needs of students, student-designed programs, so is there some independent study-type work that kids could do, personalized advising models and looking at that from maybe at the high school level, is there a small-scale thing that we could work with? World language competencies, we're working with the world language department to see if there's some areas that we can begin to work with next year. And then also, are there... And then also, are there some small changes that we can make in terms of space that could start making a difference in that area?
Mark, if you could just play back, because you were pretty involved in some of the personalized advising model early on of just some of the research you did and how you moved through that so that you were able to narrow down as a team to like three options that we're now studying. I know you looked at literally dozens of different models and approaches.
Yeah, so I think what we really found was that there, that the research really says that kids benefit from having a personal advocate in their schooling, whether it's sixth grade, ninth grade, 12th grade, it really doesn't matter. Having that personal advocate that they can feel comfortable with and really get to know is really going to be key to their success as they move through the secondary program. There are a lot of options and really a lot of, you know, any option that we go with, I think we can make successful. It's really about finding the one that's going to be a best fit for Edina. I think as we looked at, I think we have three models. It's, one is more of a traditional model, one teacher to 25 students, kind of like we would in a classroom. One would be where you, you take maybe three teachers together with like 75 students so that they're, they have a better chance of, of, you know, if they don't make a connection with one teacher, there's two other ones there that would be there and then they'd be with that group for their kind of time in that school. And then the third model would be kind of having some specialized advisors who would, really, that would be a part of their day where they would, they would be an advocate for a larger group but would be meeting with those on an individual basis as well.
I think the other challenge with that is, in an effort to be cohesive six through 12, also honoring the developmental needs, sixth grader advising will look different than 12th grade advising. So not forcing one package that umbrellas everything and misses the picture, but accommodates for each of those varying grade levels, but still is a cohesive project.
And also making sure that as they move through, it makes sense for that step by step as they move from sixth grade all the way through to 12th grade.
And again, this timeline just shows how we're phasing it in, that we are in this 13-14 year which is developing these strong recommendations. In 14-15, we'll be doing some piloting and some phasing in of some of our major areas of study, but we'll also be learning more before we can really say this is the best schedule to go with or this is the grade level configuration, this is the space we need. We really need to get some other items in place, including learning more about the birth-through-grade-five study as those recommendations move forward. We need to go deeper with our power standards and how this, these educational competencies are going to affect everything. So we recognize that it's going to be a phased-in approach that will continue to grow on our excellence, but it really literally will be in 2017, 2018, 2018, 2019 before we see this fully implemented. We will phase this in, we'll see the successes, we'll pilot things to make sure that in the end of the day, we are having our kids continue with their success today and going forward. With that in mind, I think I'm going to pause and ask the board some, open up the questions or thoughts you might have regarding the work that this implementation team is doing.
Can you tell me, and maybe the audience at home as well, a little bit more about integrated content areas and what we're, what we're thinking about with a pilot? Like, what does that mean?
These six areas are the options that they could choose from when they're looking at the pilot program. So if they're looking at some sort of integration between classes, combining classwork, maybe doing interdisciplinary work, whether that is through technology or through just combining in certain classes, that's an option that is out there for piloting.
So this is between individual teachers?
That's correct, yep.
But as they're doing pilots, it can't be, it's interdependent to the bigger picture. So if it isn't something we can bring to scale, then it'd probably be, have less of an interest. We still might benefit from the power of collaboration, but we still want to make sure that if, for example, we're doing an integrated unit or integrated curriculum, that's something that would align to where we're taking with the educational competencies. So we may see some combination in the science and math area, for example, rather than a standalone blending those, or we may see some in the fine arts and language arts. We've seen some coursework around that, or the combination of language arts and business and some type of communication where those standards can be met. So there are other academies out there or different approaches that use that, and we just want to start piloting into those.
So on that same line, are there models of integrated content that you've seen at other districts that would suggest some blending opportunities? Or would the suggestion begin with just introduce some pilots between disciplines such as language arts, business, or something like that?
There are definitely programs that are out there, you know, Minnetoka runs a Vantage program where they bring together several different curricular areas, looking at different standards within that. So that, that would be kind of a model type that we would be looking at, but really we'd be looking for teachers who are interested in piloting something in that area and maybe taking those ideas and seeing if we can run with those a little bit.
Yeah, and as Dr. Dresden alluded, there's academies that are run, there are schools within the schools, there are schools that use a content basis to, in essence, create their own course and then pick from a menu of content standards and check off. There's no shortage of ideas. This is a little bit of an effort to see what sort of creative juices are flowing with our own staff, what are the things that they see and what might we be able to pluck off that has that broader stroke or that hierarchy that we're looking for.
I think definitely a key is, can we take whatever the pilot is to scale? I mean, we don't want to have one little offshoot program, we're really looking at scalable ideas.
You guys are doing a ton of work, what's the biggest challenge?
It's, it's a very ambitious goal. I, you know, I think of, there are certain trees that have roots that grow close to the surface and they're, they're long and it's a big and beautiful tree and you think it's wonderful, but over time, the tree will eventually topple. So for me, the biggest challenge is that I feel like these roots are strong and they're deep and they're going down far, but standing on the surface, people are going, how come this tree isn't growing faster? We don't see any progress and all the growth is happening underneath and it will stand the test of time. It will have roots that are strong and connected and healthy and vibrant, so even if something happens to the tree, the root system is still intact. But that's terribly frustrating and, and it's slow and arduous. My other analogy is it feels like we're all standing together with our shoes tied and we say, "Scheduling, move!" And we take a step and forget that we're tied to space and time. And how do we do that? So it's, that's also a little bit frustrating and challenging because you're moving many pegs at once to get the whole building to move.
I think it's also really, you know, Edina has a strong history of excellence and we, because we're, we've always been good at what we've done, to try and create change in a system that's already good, it's a little bit harder than when, if something's not so good, change is more, seen as being more necessary. And I think that, that within the system, it's really hard to convince people that they have to change, that the world is changing along with us.
Thank you, that's very helpful. And also, you don't have to answer it now, but also how can we as a board support you as well in this effort?
It's echoing what Randy said, you've done a tremendous amount of work and it feels like you've had this opportunity to look around the corner into the future that a lot of us don't necessarily have because you're putting in all of this time in active research. Have you identified risks of not moving in this direction? Or risks of just saying, "Edina does have this history of excellence, if we stay the course that's set," what risks have you seen that emerge?
I don't know if we've had that direct discussion, but I mean, we certainly, I think as a group, we have a strong opinion that, that the world is changing and that we do need to change. I don't think we've really been prepared to think about what would happen if we don't start to change with it.
Can you just talk a little bit about the student design program? And is, do you see that as, as an older, with seniors more? And then what are the different practices that are ways that they can use that?
Yeah, it's, it's a good question. Some of that comes off of a spark idea of how can we engage student interest? It makes probably the easiest in most sense to be looking at that senior level, not unlike the May term or an expansion thereof, to try to have a student sculpt their program. And we do have students that do this on a relatively regular basis, but it's a small number, an individual and not every year, every year. So offering them the opportunity to design a program and then for us to support that or for them to pull other students in and have it be a smaller cohort to move forward.
And really provide a system for that to happen as well. So the student-designed aspect of it might end up in a junior or senior year, but we really need to provide the structure for, for students as they move through the system to, to set them up for success for doing that when they're juniors and seniors.
Yeah, one of the elements we've also talked about is perhaps designing an advisory or a course that supports them to be eventually leading towards an independent project, something where they, whether it's a capstone project or, but training along the way so it's not suddenly plunk, here's nine days, go for it. And they really don't have the tools to help that come to fruition.
Can you tell us about the opportunities for the community to hear more about this and have some dialogue and input?
We have, this coming Wednesday, March 19th, next Tuesday, March 25th, are two of the early, early opportunities. We also come back in April and May along the way, but as we continue this work and as we start picking up speed, there are going to be, there's a need for it to be a community, a parent, a student, a staff dialogue around this because our power in Edina remains partnership. And so we will have those in-person conversations, we'll likely have some online opportunities to do this. I think the next five to six months are going to be critical for us as a school district community because we'll have really the pre-K through 12 framework in place. It's now, how do we start pulling this together to make sure that we have the resources in the proper place to make this successful? And so the power of this tactical team, which is the six teachers who meet on a daily basis and spend unlimited hours just researching and going deep into this work and doing videoconferencing with colleagues throughout the United States and doing site visits where they can and still stay within budget and all that work is really going to, really allow us to be successful, but in the end, it still needs, not just research, it needs that community component.
Additional questions?
Thank you for all your work.
Thank you.
E-Learning Squared?
Yep.
E-Learning Squared's up next. Welcome.
Good evening, Board. Good evening, Superintendent. Tonight, we'd like to provide an update and some discussion points on the E-Learning Squared, where we've been and where we think our path going forward. Just want to reiterate what the ideals were for E-Learning Squared and that is, and I think you've seen a little bit tonight, is just this increased emphasis on how do we retool our instruction in a digital age. And so we heard, we saw the fifth grade students from Countryside and we just heard from the secondary studying, the talk about how technology is helping to forge that and enable us to do that. And so our large part about E-Learning Squared is, is preparation with our teachers to help them as they retool that instruction and then also finding digital assets and finding digital content. But the third component of that is ensuring that our students actually have access to technology so that they're able to engage anytime, anywhere, anyplace and have these authentic experiences. E-Learning Squared, unlike other one-to-one initiatives though, really looks at a student as the person who has choice. That student is someone who can decide what device that they use and how they use that device. And it's in a walled garden, so we're not saying that that student can just go off and do anything they want, but we really look at practicing or introducing and practicing those skills that these students will need as they go on after high school into college and life to be able to leverage technology to their full advantage. Up to date, we've had oh, close to 1,300 devices sold. We have provided quite a bit of professional development and Mike will talk about that in a moment with our teachers. We do continue to have rich dialogue with our families to talk about the positive aspects of E-Learning Squared, but also about some of the negative issues about that and how do we mitigate some of the negative issues of it? And in particular, what we really like to do is hear from our community and our stakeholders to find out what's working and what's not working.
Good evening. With our survey that we conducted this spring, we can, we surveyed our students, our staff, and our parents. And we had about 401 parents fill out the survey. And their, overall, their satisfaction with the device was pretty good. They talked about how easy it was for their child to be organized, they talked about how they're not fighting over the family computer anymore, things like that. On the negative side, they said that setting some boundaries at home and managing child's use of technology at home was, was difficult and that they weren't necessarily seeing what was happening in the classroom as much. From our staff, the attitudes toward E-Learning Squared has increased from this year compared to last year and the access to technology, the students able to access resources and complete things, they've seen some increases with that. Eighty-eight percent said that they are asking students to utilize their devices in the classroom at least weekly, if not daily. On the student's side, we heard that it helps them stay organized and communicate with their teachers and fellow classmates. It's, "Every tool they needed at their fingertips" was one of the quotes. Students admit that sometimes in class, it's a distraction and that, and that sometimes some teachers ask them to bring the device, but many others don't, and so when to bring and when not has been an issue. But when we asked the students, "How has it impacted your learning?", 93% of them responded favorably to that. As we...
So as we look for next year, we can, we have a few scenarios that we'd like to propose to you, and I'll have Tim talk about those.
Good evening. We've been working on E-Learning Squared for about 15 months now, so we've learned a lot and we've been engaged with the community, with the teachers, with the families. And we've, we're looking at kind of what we can plan ahead for the 14-15 school year, we can continue with our current plan or we've got another option. So as we look at the current framework, right now, currently, we have sixth and ninth grade students with the opportunity at the Best Buy web store. We're also supplying Chromebooks to our free and reduced lunch students. But as you look at this graph here, you see two, two of the red spaces, and what that means is that our current eighth and 12th grade students do not have access compared to the sixth and ninth grade. So, and going into this school year, we knew that we would have communications with those families, just inquiring about why they're, they were not chosen to have access to this web store. And it's, it's been kind of frustrating for me to, because I feel, I feel a genuine, you know, I feel sadness that they don't have the opportunity and it's, it's a difficult conversation to have because, just because they're, aren't in that specific grade level, they just don't have the same opportunities. So as we look ahead to the next opportunity for, of what we're proposing, is that we changed the, the phrasing, the framework from highly recommended to required. And that's a, that's a very significant change. And what that takes away is that for, and this, this impacts the teachers because for perhaps the teachers that may not have actively engaged technology, they had a way out saying that, you know, because it's highly recommended, it's not required, that was an opportunity for them to not participate compared to other teachers. But as we switched from the mentality from highly recommended to required, that takes that out of the equation. So what we're proposing is that every student in grade five through 12 will have access to a technology learning device. And as we look at this graphic, we see grades five and 12, and what we're proposing is that they will receive a district-provided Chromebook. And for the fifth grade model, we are proposing that that will be in the form of a Chromebook cart in every fifth grade classroom that will... cart in every fifth grade classroom that will consist of 30 Chromebooks and knowing that there will be anywhere between 20 to 25 students in that class, they will have five extra Chromebooks. So in case of accidental damage or issues with the device, they have some extras there. And then for the 12th grade, if those seniors elect to have, to receive a Chromebook that's provided by the district, they can opt to have that, or if they choose not to receive a Chromebook, then that's an option as well. And then what we're thinking of is sixth, eighth and ninth grade will have access to the Best Buy web store. So as I mentioned, grade five, we see this as a great opportunity for this grade level, not only just because it will help for the transition when they get to middle school, but also because we see this as a walled garden, as Steve mentioned, that we kind of condition the kids on acceptable use. We engage those families with this partnership. We invite them to our community events, our parenting in the digital age classes, and we just kind of give them the opportunity. And as you saw earlier, elementary students are highly engaged, they're excited to use this technology, and we hear from many of the teachers that all, if they had just three or four or five more in their classrooms, then it just offers more opportunities for, for more students to use the technology. So as we look ahead at our Best Buy web store, we're excited to announce that Apple can now be a part of that web store, which it previously was not an option. And what we're looking at is the MacBook Air product and as well as a Chromebook and then two Ultrabook PCs. We're specifically not at this moment pursuing the iPad, just because after talking to teachers and building administrators, we feel that although it's a very, it's a very powerful tool and it's, it can offer a lot, we feel that, you know, specifically in our software ecosystem of Moodle and Google Apps, there are some limitations that we feel would not be as beneficial compared to the Chromebook model and the other options for our web store.
So as we look at our transformation, we're going to be working closely with the teaching and learning department and have been to accelerate moving our content to more of a digital format. Many of our staff have developed Moodle courses where they have content available along with digital textbooks, but we're continuing to expand that through our partnership with the Minnesota Collaborative Curriculum Consortium. Along with that, providing opportunities from a professional learning standpoint for flipped instruction, increasing the number of videos in our academy, renewed emphasis on digital age learning by creating expectations for utilizing apps through content, through collaboration, through creation of student work, as you saw earlier today. And then make sure that staff have the tools necessary in their classroom. And then as we look at priority needs for our professional learning, trying to make sure that everyone has the opportunity and it's embedded in what they do.
So our, our next steps is we're working with budgets right now to determine what the budgets and the costs of this project would be, either scenario A or B. And then from then, we would seek a board recommendation from that. Then what we would do is ramp up quickly to work with our partner, Best Buy, to identify the products in the spring. We would continue to work and have communications with our families, to talk with our families. Tim's done a fantastic job of communicating with our families, letting them know the options. We'd have parent and family nights, communicating with them. And then we're really interested in providing a smorgasbord, if you will, of professional learning opportunities for our staff. And that would include anything from a tech day in June 12th to online learning opportunities throughout the summer, working with the Edina Ideas Conference in August, and then also just throughout the year with the PLCs and working with the teachers. So we have a lot of opportunities that we'd like to use to address those students and be able to hit the teachers where they need it and provide the professional development for them and then continue to evaluate it going forward. And finally, I'd just like to, before I turn it over to questions, I'd like to thank Tim, Mike, Susan, Randy and Chad and Susan Tennyson that have helped with this project to do the evaluation, to help in the communications. It's been a team effort and I think to be successful, it needs to be a team effort. I want to personally acknowledge all their hard work. And with that, I'll take questions.
We did have a presentation this earlier this evening and had some discussion around this. Any questions, additional questions at this time?
So the cost of the device to a family, that's currently subsidized by the district, right?
It's not subsidized by the district per se, but what we do do is every device that's sold, we incur a charge through Best Buy's web store. It's a fee for service. And so that fee includes the cost of Geek Squad support as well as the web store and then the aggressive pricing on the device.
So if I were to go buy that device on my own versus through the store, what's the approximate price difference?
There'd be at least $150 price difference between what you can get at Best Buy retail and what you can get through the E-Learning Squared web store.
Kathy?
I was just going to say, as we were going quickly through those slides, I just wanted to make it clear to the audience at home, what we understood, because we've already gone through the workshop, is when you were showing what was happening next year, because of the way we rolled out our pilot with ninth grade last year and then sixth and ninth grade this year, for next year, those kids rolling up the devices they already have, everyone in sixth through 12th grade would have devices except the eighth graders and the 12th graders because they just got missed the way we put the pilot into place. And that's why you put them in the red boxes and that's why we're talking about doing something different for next year, other than the way we've done it. We continue to do the sixth through ninth grade, but we wanted to do something so we didn't have two classes of students who simply weren't participating in this technology.
Thank you, Kathy. That's exactly right. We work very closely identifying what grade level to pilot at and what we heard consistently from the middle schools was ninth and sixth grade. What that does is pro some challenges because as we do the phased implementation, it leaves a couple of spots and now it's coming to get at it. What we're really starting to hear is we're, we're reaching a critical mass in our schools where at the middle schools, at those grade levels, everybody's bringing a device and using a device. And what we hear from our teachers is that if we can get all of a Chromebook or better in those classrooms, that there's really going to start seeing a larger tipping point, if you will, for that transformation to digital learning.
Steve, as more students have these, is there any opportunity for forming a secondary market or supporting one for families who maybe would, would prefer to spend less and get a used Chromebook or device and other families that maybe are looking to upgrade?
That's a great question. We're still new in this, in this process, but in, in another year, we'll start hitting our third year and so that's a great opportunity. The other thing we do is we do work within the law, which says that our, when we recycle our district-owned technology, we can provide that to families of need of free and reduced lunch. And so we have been actively engaged in, when we call, it's part of our DMTS is all for all, or how do we help make sure that every family has a device and try to get those devices in the hands of the family. So we have a number of our staff during their lunchtime refurbishing laptops so that we can then provide them to families of need. And that is, that's a unlimited loan, if you will, so we provide them through that, through our refresh. But I think in a few years' time, as we start seeing more and more devices, I think that'll be a great opportunity for that. We also had this spring, Tim and Mike in conjunction with Best Buy, we held a Geek Squad Community Ed Course, and so we trained 30 students, became Geek Squad cadets, if you will. And so we're starting to build this capacity within the organization with our students through the Geek Squad relationship where we're training our students to be Geek Squad Support Agents within our district.
Steve, this is a little off topic, but how are we doing with home access to wireless or internet access for those families who do not currently have it?
You know, I think that's, that's still going to be a challenge as we go forward because there is this idea of a digital divide. Here's a couple of things that we're doing to address that. One is we're working closely with Comcast, which does offer a very aggressive price for our families that fit in the free and reduced lunch. And then I'm also proud to say that we're working very closely with the Edina Give and Go and the Ed Fund to help provide internet access and work with them to provide internet access for families that we identify. So one of the challenges that we're doing, we need to be very cognizant of data privacy and, and respecting families, but we are building a list where we identify families that don't have internet access and then working closely with these third parties and leveraging the district to be able to purchase the devices so that they're aggressive pricing and then providing them to those families. So as we hear about it, we get after it.
Thank you. Additional questions?
And you'll have your recommendation to us next month?
I think it's discussion-
For discussion today.
For, just for discussion today.
Thank you.
And just anecdotally, Steve, I will say that I have a daughter in sixth grade and the Chromebook has worked out very well. And this is coming from a student who K through five had zero desire to do, have anything to do with electronics and the work that you guys have put into this and the teachers that she works with, it's been a really great program.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Thank you all. Next up, we have our district leadership update. Dr. Dressen?
The school district is very active both in the classrooms because these are just important days for learning as we gear up for, for this final rush before spring break, but also at a district level, we have a lot going on because we're very active in 2013, 14, but we're also really focused on 2014, 15. And so I just want to give a quick update on some of the good news things, some of the action items that are going to occur later as the board moves through its agenda tonight. First of all, I want to recognize a variety of staff members, and this is again why I think our pilot effort at the secondary level is going to be very successful. The Edina Ed Fund has been a great partner for us and have been very active in supporting innovation in the classroom. And we've had a variety of initiatives that really did come from an idea a teacher got from who knows where and that they requested some small amount of funding just to try it out and see if it could help advance work. And then if it was successful, we continued to grow that. But over the past month, the Edina Ed Fund has gone around the school and awarded a variety of grants to staff members for a variety of different reasons. And it's always an exciting day because they surprise the teacher and the students with that, awarding them checks for a variety of work that will help advance learning in very creative ways, from things that happen in the classroom to some of the staff development training that we've got planned, a variety of ways that, again, great things happen because we have groups like the Edina Ed Fund that seek additional funding support. And this is not their major funding. They also do some major initiative work, but this is that innovative grant awards. And typically, we've had the staff members come and attend the board meeting, today we're just doing it from a virtual standpoint. But again, many good things, a lot of excited people and a lot of excited children. I'm going to ask Mary Manterfield to come forward. Well, boy, I'll tell you, she knows cues. Mary oversees our district integration plan. It's a plan that we work closely with the Minnesota Department of Education on. It's an action item for the board later tonight that we do have to align with MDE's timeline. And so Mary, if you could kind of walk us through two action items really. One is around the revised budget and the second is around the budget for next year.
So the revised budget, the reason we are coming in with a revision is we have found out we qualify for incentive aid. And it wasn't until within the last month that MDE identified what categories you could use for incentive aid. And for us, it's about $97,000. So some of the things that you can use incentive aid for are our program with Minneapolis that used to be known as Choice is Yours and now we refer to it as Minneapolis Transportation. Choice is Yours ended when the lawsuit ended and WMAP chose to no longer support that particular program. And so by revising the FY '14 budgets, it's an opportunity for us to qualify for almost $100,000. So with the FY '15 budget, that is now a change. So last year, the legislature said we are changing how we fund integration. It is now called achievement and integration. The purpose from the statute is fourfold, to pursue racial and economic integration, to increase academic achievement, to increase, to create equitable educational opportunities and to reduce academic disparities based on students' diverse racial, ethnic and economic backgrounds. Every plan must include goals for reducing the disparities in academic achievement among all students and then specific categories of students, American Indians, Asian natives, Alaska natives, Asian Pacific Islanders, Hispanic, Black and free and reduced priced meal students. That would be the achievement goal. And then the second is increasing racial and economic integration in school and districts, and that's the integration goal. So the slide before you will be our achievement goal. It is the reading target based on 2013 data with the goal that we will cut the gap in half for all students by 2017. There are a number of activities and strategies that we have in our plan. They include the, we were also given very clear direction that there are categories the funding had to fall under, college and career readiness, integrated learning environments, family engagement and training teachers and administrators. We've got college and career readiness, which is our avid program and increasing participation and enrich our AP courses. An integrated learning environment, we got, we have programs like Young Scholars, extended school year programs, RTI and our intervention reading classes at both middle schools. Family engagement, we're going to have a goal of increasing the percentage of participation in conferences and other outreach programs. And with teacher training and, with training of teachers and administrators, we will continue to work with all staff in supporting academic achievement for learners from diverse cultures, incomes and ability levels. We'll provide professional development resources and training to improve achievement for all students. The integration goal, we, we will hit that in two categories. One, by our participation in WMAP and having students, our Edina students, attend the fair school. And the second is we will continue to support our program with Minneapolis through transportation. That's a program formerly called Choice is Yours. These are students who come to our schools with diverse economic backgrounds. As I mentioned earlier, we will, we can qualify for this budget, this for FY '15, $93,000 in incentive aid. So our initial budget is $858,149. We have another $93,000 we qualify for in incentive aid. And then we have to contribute $176,000 to WMAP. And if you looked at the budget this evening, you will see that we put a percentage of it into the staff development and the other percentage into student programming. In the past, when we had these budgets, we had a line item that we contributed to, to being part of WMAP, but we never had to allocate what line item it was going to fall into. This year, with the new achievement and integration budget, 80% of the funding we get needs to go directly to student programming. You can spend 10% on administration cost and 10% on staff development.
Mary, the numbers you provided are different. Is it, did we, did we provide the wrong presentation?
No, no, and really one of the reasons the number to WMAP is different is if you, if you looked in the budget, the total is $176,000. The $120,154 is going into the student programming. The other $54,000 is, it probably was just missed, it's going into the staff development.
Okay, and the same with the 761 was a little higher when you gave it. Now, if we can go back a couple of slides, Rick, I'm not clear how you're calculating this total increase or if there's an error in how that's arrived upon. From the, are you looking from total increases from baseline data?
Yeah, and, and the baseline data is to reduce it by half in each category to, for 2016, 17.
But like the minus 1% for Asian, I don't know how that adds up.
Well, so here's, MDE requires us to measure not against the top performing group, but they require us to measure against white students. So every group we are measuring with is against white students. So do we expect that our Asian students are going to go down in their performance? Absolutely not. But if you're looking at the measurement of trying to cut it- of trying to cut it in half, that's what the calculation comes out as.
Okay, now... Yeah, okay. In the future, we may want to just put a footnote on to say, increase based on, you know, crazy MDE calculation. In those words.
Mary?
Thank you.
I had a question. The program that used to be called Choice is Yours, and now I think you called it Minneapolis Transportation, are there any core differences between the two programs?
So, one of the things that we have done in our particular plan is continue to support our academic achievement specialists at our three secondary schools. We have funding in for scholarships. Really, the biggest thing that happened is the lawsuit expired, and so we, and WMAP decided a few years ago, part of the incentive of the lawsuit was really to integrate all the schools. And what has now happened is some of the schools are, have a higher percentage of students of color than Minneapolis. So, the point of lawsuit kind of moved away. So, in answer to your question, we will still, in Edina, we will still be providing transportation for the students from Minneapolis that would qualify for what, essentially for free and reduced-priced meals, and we will still continue to support them with computers, technology, some of the same things that we have done in the past.
And so the transportation is to and from school for the regular school day, I'm assuming?
Correct, yes. So, we have buses that pick students up in, at their homes, and bring them to Edina, and then back home at the end of the day. And we can do that because it's a partnership, and there's a economic need that the students have, unlike being able to go into another community where we have open-enrolled students and provide transportation for them. And we don't provide transportation for all Minneapolis students that come through open enrollment. It's only those who qualify specifically for this program.
This program, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
So, when I was looking through the entire plan that we have in our, in our, in our board book, one of the goals is actually a WMAP goal about how they pick students and balance their student population. And so, that WMAP goal is in our goals because of, part of our way to increase integration is that we're supporting the WMAP programs and sending our students to the Fair Schools.
Correct, yes. Thanks for pointing that out. We, every one of the 11 members of West Metro Education Partnership will have to have a goal that's aligned to, to the WMAP goal.
Okay.
Thank you.
On the, on the WMAP, I would double-check the statistics, because we had a discussion about whether the numbers were correct in terms of their ratios. So, they're looking at that again. Maybe before you submit it, you can just double-check with them to see if they've changed their numbers.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mary. Later tonight, the board will be taking action on identifying an architect, architectural firm who are providing us services for our ongoing projects and a possible future construction project. We did have a team of board members and administrators who served in this interview process, Lisa and Kathy and Margot and Eric Hamilton, who's our Director Building and Grounds, and maybe Margot can give us a quick update on the findings and the recommendation, recommended action that'll be occurring later in the meeting.
Yes, it was already on. Good evening. The team reviewed four of the firms in terms of future instructional programming experience, looking at financial and our facility limitations, and considering our demographic study in 21st Century Learning, some of the information you heard tonight, just in terms of what our study groups are talking about for programming for students, but then the potential that, that some of that information, what we're doing for students may have a facility impact. This is the successful firm. We wanted to be able to assist with bond referendum planning and preparation planning and communication, and if the bond is successful, that the firm would implement, be involved in implementation of that bond, and also continue to implementation with our 10-year alternative facilities plan. And as Dr. Dressen said, we had four firms, narrowed it to two for a second interview, and did reference checks, and asked a variety of questions, and the committee's recommendation was to move forward with approving WOLD Architects as our district architect firm, architectural firm.
And we can take action on that later in the evening.
Yep.
Thank you. I want to just mention, too, about the budget. The board will be taking a discussion item as relates to our general fund budget, and we're trying to move this through as quickly as we can, yet still be fiscally responsible. So, we're on this phase process that we're trying to move the budget plan forward. We've had a task force of building principals and district administrators who've been working since January. We've talked about it several board work sessions. Tonight, we're presenting some general findings and recommendations that we're asking the board to discuss, and then we'll be bringing a recommended budget forward later this spring. We recognize that we have a differential where we have more expenditures if we move forward than we have revenues, and so we recognize the need to make some adjustments. Those targeted adjustments are someplace on a $100 million budget. We're projecting someplace between $500,000 and $750,000. We also recognize there are some things that we want to enhance in how we're programming those dollars. And so, what we've done is this task force has broken down, first, taken a look at some adjustments, or possible reductions, or new revenues, or some reallocations. We've been able to identify $963,000 of potential. We're asking the board for consideration of about $527,000 of adjustments that we'll continue to support moving forward in that adjustment process. A lot of these are new revenues, be it from retirees who are, we had more people retire than we had previously projected, so there's a cost saving there. We recognize some revenues from third-party billing revenues. This is part of the special education process. We've generated some funds there. We're looking at a half percent across the board, cost center reduction, seeing $141,000 there. Considering some athletic fees, we'd ask the board to be acting on later this spring, some savings there. Some areas that we're still studying under this Tier Two would be looking at some possible support staff positions that we might be looking at differently. We're also looking at some special education staffing models that we might be able to adjust and create some savings as well. We'll be more specific. What we really want to do is work closer with the direct staff involved in these decisions to make sure we have strong recommendations that we bring forward. Under the enhancements, we do see some enhancements that we'd like to consider. Some of them include continuing to offer our Saturday School Program for some of our students who need that extra boost and are interested in joining us on Saturday mornings. We're possibly looking at some additional special ed needs in the area of kindergarten, again, generating some new revenues to cover some of our costs as relates to athletics. And those have become very comparable then with our neighboring school districts, as well as look at a success center and some summer learning programming for some of our students, again, who need that extra time and extra skill sets. Some areas that we're still studying a little further is around some support staff help for the fact that we're going to an all-day, every-day kindergarten program. We're looking at how we can advance some of our intervention support for our language arts program at the elementary level, as well as providing some additional staffing support for our swimming classes at the middle school. And so, looking and studying and discerning what the best way to possibly consider that, some one-time funds, trying to make sure we have support, if we, possible, for our writing and math centers at our secondary schools, the secondary intervention support, again, some more programming to support kids who have that extra need for support, and then some plans as we roll out our strategic efforts. So, those are all areas that we'll be bringing for board to discuss further, but wanted to touch on those at this point. Would also recommend that we continue to move forward with the hiring, that we feel all of the recommendations we're bringing forward would not impact the hiring proposals for a variety of replacements, as we do want to get out in front of our hiring process yet this spring. And so, we'd like to be able to post those later this month. Interviews could take place in April and early May. So, that really kind of gives you an overview of where we are with our general fund budget. The board did approve the capital fund budget last month, but this just gives us a good flavor of the status that we have at this point. I would entertain any questions at this time. Would ask Margot and Gwen and any other administrators to assist.
In terms of the support staffing, I know that you're still working with the principals primarily on looking at some of the different support staff positions. Do you see maybe a hybrid coming out of that, or where is that going?
We are studying that of, one area is our media clerks and looking for additional support in the area of technology. Can they, can they provide that service or not? Again, just trying to take a look at, and a lot of them fall because we're trying to maintain that class size, or really do want to keep that ratio of number of teachers in front of students as low as possible. So, it does fall to some of those areas. One of our reduction areas that we are taking in the Tier One is a .5 FTE staffing position in the district office. So, we've already accepted that that's a position that we think we will have to do without, even though it's a need. So, we are trying to be as creative as possible.
Additional questions? Thank you, Rick. Now, move on to the consent agenda. Got a motion to bring the consent agenda to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
So, moved and seconded to present the consent agenda. Rick, could you please walk us through the consent agenda?
Yes, consent agenda includes the personnel recommendations. We do have one, or two personnel recommendations I'd like to note. One is Nikki Tusher, who has been our Human Resource Manager, has accepted a position in another district, and we wish her well. She'll be with us until the first part of May. Also, Jerry Lakaska, who has been the Normandale Principal for the past two and a half years, is retiring at the end of the year, and we wish Jerry the best. And those positions, along with the other ones I mentioned, we plan to post as soon as possible, get some good input from staff and community as we build that profile and fill those positions. Other personnel recommendations from community yet exists. We have a variety of terminations and non-renewals. This is part of our routine action items in the March meeting, and those, again, are not surprises to the staff involved. We have expenditures. We have two student, student-teacher agreements by policy, one with Luther College, another one with Minnesota University Mankato, and then several gifts. And with that, that would conclude the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Rick. Any discussion? Sing, go ahead.
I had just asked about the Afton Press gift, and I just tried to clarify with Randy if that was typical, that we receive books as a gift, and particularly since they were assigned to a certain grade level, if there was, I just was curious about policy and if that was typical, because I've always been under the impression that the, the print industry can demand what they want. So, I had asked Randy about that earlier in the day.
So, just a quick, first of all, good evening. Just a quick note about that particular book. It's from Afton Press. Our gift was for 650 copies of it. Initially, this book was given as a free copy to Jackie Rail in her receipt of Teacher of the Year Award. When Jackie had contacted the company, asking about the book, asking for basically classroom sets of the book, the company was more than happy to oblige with classroom sets. We then asked again if the, the company would provide additional books for other teachers wanting to use this particular book, and they said that they would provide up to 650 copies. So, we did accept the 650 copies. One of the interesting notes that came in the letter was that this also supported them in their moving to a new office where they were reducing inventory. So, we did receive an excellent book. It met their needs, it meets our needs, and it's a book that we feel that we can use in classes around culturally responsive instruction with our equity teams. The title of the book is "To Be Free: Understanding Eliminating Racism," and it just offers some history and perspective for students as well.
Thank you, Randy, for the background. Any additional questions or comments regarding consent agenda? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstained.
Motion carries. Next up, we have our action items. First item is the 2013-14 integration budget as amended. Mary Manterfeld presented that earlier. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to accept the 13-14 amended integration budget. Any discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Next item is our Achievement Integration Budget and Plan. That was also part of Mary's presentation. Can I add a motion, please?
So moved.
Moved and seconded. Discussion. Sing none. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. A motion for the Architectural Services, which Margot touched on earlier. This was walked in this evening. I should have a copy in front of you. And a motion to bring this to the floor, please?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Any additional discussion or questions?
Lisa, I'd just be curious to see, hear your insight as a newborn member, getting to know, because we've all worked with WOLD for a while. What were your thoughts?
It was a very interesting process. They presented, they, WOLD came to us with a very well-thought and presentation, and they seemed to touch on every aspect that we were concerned about. And I appreciated that the relationship that Eric Hamilton has with WOLD has been going quite well. And so, since he's going to be the point contact person, his opinion carried a lot of weight with me. So, of the four, I felt most comfortable with it.
Thanks.
Any additional questions or comments? I know there was some questions, at least from myself, you know, handing off a new construction project before we're clear on what we're doing. Did that come up at all in your discussions, or did you guys get any more comfortable with that?
Yeah, we did, we did ask that question, and about what the process would be for looking at something new such, so that it would not be designed by small committees and too much input, but be able to have that broader, you know, visionary thinking. And they had a good explanation for how they do that, and we felt comfortable with their response.
Okay, because I think that's critical. Any other comments, Margot?
In addition to that, Eric Hamilton had internally some conversation with the committee on how he would handle it internally from the district's perspective, and then we also heard that from the architects.
Great. Seems like you've covered the topic. Any other additional questions or comments? Thank you all for your work on this. All those in favor of approving Architectural Services for WOLD, as was selected through the process, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have Audit Services. Got a motion to bring this to the floor?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded to bring up Audit Services, and Jim Gilligan, and nothing else to do tonight, so he's been sitting in the back patiently waiting. Welcome.
Good evening. I asked Jim Gilligan, our controller, to join us tonight, since he leads the audit from beginning to end with his team of people, and led this request for proposal process. I was a part of the team, as a team member, but it's really Jim and his team that works with these people more closely and led the process. We did run a similar process to the architectural process and incorporated the Audit RFP as part of, periodically, every so many years, we do need to have a process to have requests for proposals for our services. So, this is the second of, I think, five or six that you will get over the, between now and June, in terms of official bids or outside of construction official bids or requests for proposals. So, with that, I'll hand it over to Jim, and you could, that one should be on, yep.
Good evening. Thank you. Our evaluation team consisted of four people. Margot mentioned she was one of them. I was one of them, obviously. And we also used Robert Plombon, our Assistant Controller, and Liz Lanto, our Accountant. They both have audit experience and... All right. So, four of us. Liz Lanto... Liz Lanto, I'll move on. We received four proposals back through the process. Each of us went through the four proposals individually, and then we got together and quickly realized that there were two top runners, MMKR and Clifton Larson Allen, both very respected audit firms within the school district and government accounting field, very, very strong. So we had them come in and do a presentation to the committee of a, kind of a mock school board presentation that you'll be seeing once our audit is completed, and then a short sales pitch, basically, why should we hire you? After that process, the, the team felt they were still very strong. They both, they both did very, very well. And the, at the end of the day, when we, when we looked at the qualifications, the criteria, the criteria that we used, which I cannot read now, we used the cost, we used the estimated total hours, the allocation of hours amongst their staff, the experience of the firm, and their presentation styles, the audit report and the management letter, readability of those. During the presentations, MMKR really reiterated that Edina is the A client for their company. And for us, what that meant is they are willing to give us their best resources. And that really showed in the allocation of hours for the audit. They had 65% of the hours that are being done on our audit are being performed by senior level all the way up to partner level. So very few of the hours are being done at the entry level or clerical level. So those two things are really what drove us to recommend MMKR as our audit firm for 2014.
Thank you. Jim, any questions?
Basically, I mean, they're a little bit higher in cost, but that higher in cost is because you're going to get more senior people that you think will get, do a better job for us.
Exactly. We figured we were getting more bang for our buck. Costs were pretty close. They are a little bit higher. They are, however, lower than what they have been for the last few years, and they've actually maintained a flat rate for the last few years as well, thanks to some pushing from Margot.
Thanks for your work, Tim.
You're welcome.
Thank you. All those in favor of approving MMKR for our audit at a cost of $34,800, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And just as a side note, they were about a little under $1,400 or a little over $1,400 higher, but it's still relatively in the ballpark. Next up, we have our field trip. A motion, then a Japanese to Chevy Chase, Maryland.
Before we do this question, we don't usually vote on field trips. Don't they usually just come through in the consent or in information?
Yeah, I was wondering why that.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay. Well, we still.
Just going to say, when I read Japanese, I thought maybe they're going to Japan, and that's the reason it would come up as a motion. No problem. And this policy, though, is intended for action this evening, correct? Can I get a motion to?
Since it wasn't consent, do we need to approve it independently?
Move to retract the motion?
No, I think.
No, no, no. Go ahead with it.
Move to approve.
Did we actually move it? Because you had a question.
I had a question, but I'll move it.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving the Japanese trip to Chevy Chase, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next up, we have a scheduled policy review, student policy 533. We've seen this before. Can I add a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Anything changed since we saw this last?
Nothing has changed. There, we did have continued discussion at the policy level, pardon me? I thought you were going to go. We did have continued discussion at the policy committee following our discussion at last month's board meeting. There was a question regarding the use of the word wellness in the title of the policy, since wellness in Edina is being developed to encompass many more topics in addition to food, nutrition, and physical activity. What the committee discussed is the fact that there is a state mandate that the district have a wellness policy. So given that mandate, we feel it's helpful for searchability to have wellness in that title. There was, between the board meeting and the last policy meeting, there was an opportunity for Nicole Tusher and myself as a representative of policy to meet with the wellness committee. And then we had some continued discussion as a full committee regarding, in particular, Appendix Two, and taking a look at the Healthy and Hunger-Free Kids Act regulations and the additional provisions, which at this point in time are proposed as aspirational goals for the district, some of which are quite specific in eliminating or decreasing particular food items. After significant discussion, the committee does support the current language in Appendix Two. But Lisa and Kathy, what else can we add?
Did you discuss number seven in Appendix One? I think we had talked about that at the last board meeting.
Thank you. Yes, we did. And in Appendix One, number seven, what Sarah's referring to is consideration of religious, ethnic, and cultural diversity of the student body in meal planning. And we discussed this both at the wellness committee level and then back again at committee level, considering that there could be more than one meeting as to whether or not there will be a variety of cultural, religious, ethnic foods provided to give students a variety of experience versus the opposite of complying with different potential needs. So the response that Mary Lombardi was able to offer during the wellness committee is that the SEDEXO does currently do what they can to comply, but it's not necessarily the intent of number seven. The primary intent is offering a variety of experiences.
Okay, so it is, okay. Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you, Regina. Any other questions or comments?
I just have a friendly amendment. There's just a subject issue in the guidelines three, number two, where it says food and beverage selection made available on campus to ensure those choices should be R consistent, not is consistent. It's just gone back and forth several times.
Friendly amendment accepted.
And we need to be R. Thank you.
Kathy, you got competition.
I am.
Additional discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We're on to discussion, information, announcements. Let's discussion, budget adjustment plan for 14-15. Anything we are thinking about there?
Previously discussed, board also in the work session, we will continue to advance this. And at the work session, there was discussion again to make sure that before we bring this forward for a full board vote, if there's some things that we feel there needs to be a, around a discussion that we would make sure that that gets worked into the process.
Yeah, I think the key takeaway that I got from our discussion previous to this meeting was that this is such a, still a moving target and a fluid discussion that we've got to, that we can't come to a final, here's the proposed budget. But I think it's good that you're working with the right staff people to figure out where to go with this and that, that we're feeling comfortable that we will make sure that the community is aware of where we're going with things. So I appreciate all your work on it.
Great. Thank you.
Additional comments or questions regarding budget? Next item, we have scheduled review of policies 427, 903, and 904 relating to immigration, work visa, community relations, and visitors to school, and distribution of materials.
With 427, the recommendation is that this policy be rescinded. It's not a required policy, and the district currently does and will continue to comply with all immigration requirements. Policy 903, materials, I'm sorry, community relations and visitors to, wait, am I on the right one? 903, yes, 903 is next.
Visitors to school district buildings and property?
Right. Part of what was recommended is, we amended the language for clarity and, and that's our primary amendments on that leasing, Kathy, additional notes?
No, there's really nothing substantive.
On 903?
Nothing substantive. And then the, there's an appendix about traffic and parking, and there were some.
Oh, appendix number seven, in the appendix number seven. The appendix number one is identical with additional language that already exists in policy. So item number seven is amended language to better align with this particular policy for visitors.
So they talked about high school students and their non-visitors.
The language is identical to policy 527, which is student use in parking. And much of it does apply, but number seven did not make sense. Now we hope it does. 904, again, the changes are mostly for clarity. There was one addition of the word display in the title, display of materials, and in the definition under Roman numeral three A, adding display to the definition for the sake of clarity.
And most of the language in here, a lot of the definitions is straight out of state and federal law. So it's language that we're mandated to have.
So in layman's terms, does this limit organizations like a, like a PCN or, you know, from, you know, wanting to make sure that parents are aware of upcoming events? Or is it more meant to just give us some general guidelines so that principals have some control over materials that are in their buildings? It, it, it basically applies to distributing or displaying materials in the school by non-district persons and organizations. So it's basically outside organizations, when they can come in, how they can come in, so they don't disrupt the school process. They have First Amendment rights, but we have the right to maintain order in our buildings. Okay. I just thought, for our partner people, I should clarify.
Additional comments, questions? Seeing none, we're on to information and announcements. Thank you, policy, for your work on that. Rick, anything?
Just a follow-up that at the February board meeting, we did have constituent from the community visit with us, Lionel Dorville. I did meet with him and have done some follow-up. He had some good insights. I think some of the sharing that was provided tonight around our advisory program is really talking to some of the concerns he expressed. And he's also an active member on our district equity advisory council. And so, again, a valued voice, and it was very helpful, and just wanted the board and community to know that we did the follow-up.
Excellent. Any other announcements, committee announcements, upcoming events? Got a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded to adjourn. Any objection to adjourning at this time? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you all.